I call the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024 to order. Mr. Klucker will not be here. Richard Spiker is here and I'm here. Tony Matosowski is not. Colin?
Present.
Jason?
Present.
We have a quorum. We can proceed. Approval of June 18th meeting minutes as distributed. Has anybody looked at them?
Yep.
I will move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zoning ordinance amendments. Jake, do you want to talk about the current revisions, updates?
Thank you. So we have a, we have a couple of relatively minor revisions to the amendments that were proposed and recommended for adoption last month. What I distributed does have the entire list of amendments that have been recommended for adoption so far and, but I will go through the additions to the recommendations. These were a couple of relatively miscellaneous but related add-ons as I went through the remainder of the ordinance, couple of sections that were some modest language that was also affected by the recommendations we made last month. On page two, this is all related to, for the most part, related to the discussions we've been having about group homes and group care arrangements. Under N on the permitted uses in residential districts, so top half of page two, under N, we had removed since we're recommending daycare centers be changed from a special exception to permitted use, that that part of the sentence that says as a special exception be deleted. And then O is again a special exception statement that was in the ordinance that now that the group home is going to be listed as a permitted use, that special exception verbiage needs to be removed from the ordinance. So section 305.1, that entire section would be removed since it would be no longer applicable. Moving over to page three, under, under group home, it's a relatively modest language modification. There were some questions brought up last month regarding provided by, you know, the statement of that that service is provided by a governmental agency, their licensed certified agents, or other responsible nonprofit social service corporation. It was pointed out that the lack of a comma between their licensed certified agents, comma, or other response, there was a lack of a comma there. And so there was a potential that that could be interpreted that it still would have to be a corporation affiliated with a government agency or their agents. So we literally are adding a comma there to remove that discrepancy and that potential misinterpretation or alternate interpretation, if you will. Also, the top half is slightly modified. I found what I believe is more appropriate description of the group home whereby we're referring to it as a living arrangement where the disabled resident occupants live together as a common household and receive regular support services from two or more staff persons on a 24-hour-a-day basis. It's important that we use that term that the occupants live together as a common household since that is consistent with the language above regarding our definitions of family that use that same verbiage of maintaining a common household. It helps to support what we discussed, which is that a group home is a, is a residential, single-family dwelling setting. So those two terms and definitions are more consistent with that amendment. And related to that, you know, we had discussed the group care facility and group residence facility and that they were very similar in nature and we were recommending that the group residence facility term and definition be deleted. However, there was a term, there was a statement in that group residence facility that I believe needs to also be, needed to also be in that group care facility. So that's what you see at the end is the, is the addition of the statement that says this does not include facilities for the care or treatment of persons released from or under the jurisdiction of a government bureau of corrections or similar institution. And in parentheses says see custodial care facility, which we do have listed as a separate use that is also defined. And that is for court ordered placement type facilities. What comes to mind would be a facility like the Edmund L. Thomas Adolescent Center, even though that's not located in the city of Erie. But it's a court ordered placement. Even, there's a couple of other scenarios that would fit under custodial care versus group care facility. So I think it's important to make that distinction.
Where does somebody like a, like a mercy center for women fit into? There's other agencies out there that aren't government. They're not providing care. It's more transitional housing.
Right. And that, and that's was the importance of adding that comma that distinguishes other responsible nonprofit social service corporations as a separate entity that can provide those services. Either, you know, and you could assume as a group home, because we did have that comma in both, under both definitions for group home and group care facility. So it, it does then clarify that these other nonprofits can operate a group home or a group care facility. So like the Mercy Center.
Group residence facility definition, though. Just using Mercy Center as an example.
Right. And if, you know, if it's a single-family dwelling and the Mercy Center operates that and the, and the persons occupying that dwelling are considered disabled, then it would be considered a group home.
What if there's multiple, what if there's multiple units?
Then, then I think it fits more under a group care facility if there are specialized services that are being provided to them. However, the Mercy Center, when they converted the school, is it Holy Rosary?
Yes.
When they converted that, they, they got several use variances permitted, one of which was just apartments, essentially multiple family dwellings. So there was no disability kind of thing. It's just they're providing housing for this particular demographic. It's not really related to, to providing services to any disabled individuals.
I guess my point is it's not, there's no care. So it's not group care facility in that case.
Yeah, but.
But it'd be a single-family dwelling under group home, which it's not. So which, where would they fall into?
I guess, yeah, I think in line with that, it almost seems like the wording maybe should be reconsidered to not necessarily specify that it is, you know, physical or mental handicap services being provided, but specialized services of some type. I think that provides some degree of flexibility in terms of how that's interpreted. So it could accommodate something like what you're describing.
But, but the last item in the list of possibility is comma or housing services, which, as I would understand it, is what they provide.
Right.
You know, you don't have to check every box to the last one. I think it's, there's a bunch of optional.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because I did put a comma there also.
Yes.
Comma or housing so that rehabilitative or housing were then distinguished as separate services too. Yeah, that, the comma thing was just, was just brought up.
The power of a link.
Within the last couple of weeks. And so we, you know, and, you know, it seemed like that was a reasonable interpretation. So we was like, well, let's make sure we get these commas in there because that, that broadens the, the scope of, of these definitions. Well, it helps to specify them too.
Sorry, where we say housing services provided by, and then it continues with governmental agency, though.
Or are you? Yeah, no, you're right. Provided by a governmental agency, their licensed or certified agents, or responsible, or other responsible nonprofit social service corporation.
So it covers every, every potential provider.
Other than a for-profit entity providing those services.
Right. And, and I guess the important thing is, is to not, is to not forget that, you know, our current definition of family that talks about permanent group homes, permanent group homes are, are different from transitional housing. And that's why the definition of group home really does need to be in line with that permanent group home statement in the definition of family. Because that is much different from providing transitional housing, which, which is essentially what the Mercy Center provides, is transitional housing. It's not, it's not a permanent living arrangement for disabled folks. So that's why there is that distinguishment about, about disabled persons in a permanent group home living arrangement. I mean, I, I don't think we're not covered by those other agencies that provide housing services that are more transitional in nature. I, I think we're also covered in that regard. And, and I guess the other arrangement that does come up, and this, this really does kind of go back to when we were talking about group housing in general, is the, is the rooming, the rooming house definition, which also provides for unrelated residents, you know, to be living together. Yeah. I mean, that's kind of a good segue into the, into the rooming, boarding home. That there's an amendment to that definition as well, that, just to help to clarify that. The, the other definition was, had a lot of superfluous language in it that wasn't really necessary. So the definition has been simplified, just to indicate that it's any dwelling or part of a dwelling containing one or more rooming units, which spaces left by the owner or operator to five or more unrelated persons. So, and that, and that does go back to, you have to tie these, tie these statements together into what other uses are listed and defined in the zoning ordinance, like dwelling unit or family. They all have to be in line with each other. So it's, that's a per dwelling unit type scenario.
Is this an opportunity to backdoor a hotel into rooming and boarding without that exclusion?
No, because we do have hotel motel listed as a separate and defined use. So if, you know, if that's the determination that, that the operation is a hotel and not a rooming house. I mean, the, the distinguishment is, is that it's actually a dwelling unit versus, and a hotel is not, because it's listed as a transient, hotels are listed as a. a transient use.
What about extended stay, gray area?
Yeah, under definition, under definitions, the term dwelling or the word dwelling shall not include hotels, motels, short-term, and now short-term rentals, or other structures used for transient residents. So I, I don't think there's any way to misinterpret the hotel-motel from dwelling where, because rooming houses can be sometimes permanent and sometimes transient. The occupants can be sometimes long-term occupants and sometimes not. And I think that what we want to make sure that we're addressing is the number of occupants in that dwelling unit, and not necessarily whether they're permanent or transient, just the number of folks that are occupying that building at any one time.
Is, do we define rooming units anywhere?
That's a good, that's a good question. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that rooming unit is defined. Dwelling unit certainly is. If that's the case, we can do two things. We can either remove that term rooming unit and just use the term rooms. Or add a definition for a rooming unit.
What is a distinguishing characteristics of rooming units mean? Do they have separate bathrooms, cooking facilities?
And that's more like a hotel.
I understand that, but...
Right, right.
If we can't define it, we can't really measure it very well. If we can't define it, we can't measure.
Right.
Yeah, I, yeah, and the most appropriate thing to do would be to either eliminate the term rooming unit and just use rooms. Because I know there are different scenarios. I know that there are some scenarios where most of the rooming houses that I'm familiar with in the city are, they are just rooms, they do not have separate bathroom facilities per room. The rooms are essentially locked off by the occupant, and the rest of the house is used as a common household. They have common living space, common bathrooms, common kitchen. So it's, kind of goes back to that occupancy issue of if it's four or less related folks, you're just a regular, single-family dwelling, even if you're locking your room at night or when you're not there. But if it's five or more folks, you know, you're still sharing a common household in this rooming house scenario, which is why it's that statement that it's part of the dwelling, it's a dwelling or part of the dwelling, and not a hotel or hotel.
We could call it the Starlight Hotel.
Right, which I think actually had a license, I think they had a hotel license.
I think they did.
But they might have been shared...
But they were this, though, weren't they?
They may have been, they may have technically, even though they called themselves a hotel, they, I think technically, they were still considered a rooming house.
But we don't want that, I guess is what, they're the example, I would, where, what zones do we allow these in?
Rooming houses?
Yeah.
I think, I think they're permitted in R3 and RLV.
Do we want Starlight Hotels in those zones?
Well, I mean, they're certainly strict standards, they are, they're registered, licensed, and inspected annually.
Yeah.
I, you know, typically, they can, you know, a place like that, obviously, let's see, rooming, yeah, residential limited business, is, right now, it's a permitted use in that district.
I think that was R2 where it was.
And I believe, I believe we, the recommendation was to have them listed as permitted in R3. They are a special exception right now.
Can I make them special exceptions everywhere?
Yeah, that was the recommendation. I mean, because there are conditions listed in the ordinance, let me look at that, four rooming houses, 30510, so let's take a look at that real quick, just so you know what we're talking about. So in R3, right now, there is, in 30510, that does have a statement about it as a special exception use in R3, which says that no more than six boarders may be housed, and that each border has an off-street onsite parking space, and that the owner or leasor of the residence shall reside full-time on the premises. That's pretty restrictive, all the way around. And I guess, if, if we change the, if we change that from special exception to permitted in 30510, goes away, right? I, I mean, and I was trying to list some of those other references to special exceptions in the proposed amendments. I suppose that, you know, if we're in agreement that, that the rooming house would be permitted in R3, then we would want to remove that section as well, about the special exception
I guess in general, I'm fine getting rid of special exceptions.
I like it as a principle, I like getting rid of them as a principle.
Yeah. Zoning code ought to tell people what they can do, and not run them through a mill of other requirements that they need to go comply with. Can I suggest that instead of rooming units, we simply say, sleeping rooms without separate facilities, sharing common use? Something like that?
Yeah.
That...
So you don't have to define it?
Yeah.
Maybe that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's appropriate to try and tighten that up, and that, I mean, the, the existing definition was certainly not really very descriptive. And this gets closer to that. So we probably want to use that common, sharing a common household.
Yeah, without separate facilities, which precludes the...
Having five bathrooms.
Separate bathrooms, or individual bathrooms and cooking facilities. Yeah. And otherwise, sharing common facility.
As far as 30510, and I'm kind of mulling that over, I mean, I think we can, I think we can draft this language today. So we want to remove the term rooming units.
Yep.
Any dwelling or part of a dwelling containing one or more rooms. Do we just want to remove the statement containing one or more rooming units, and say any dwelling or part of a dwelling in which space is let to operate, five or more unrelated, in which
I mean, part of me is inclined to say, take it out, and then if we find that there are issues, we can tighten it. I'm hesitant to try and get so specific with that definition that we twist ourselves into knots, when it may or may not even be a practical issue. I mean, it's something we can easily add language to based on things that occur, in my mind.
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes the, you know, in any ordinance, every term is not always specifically defined.
Right.
And you use common definitions, you know, I mean, that's the charges, you go to the dictionary, use common definitions. So, so you're right, I mean, it's sometimes, you know, the language can be very specific, but not necessarily have to be specifically defined, and can still be interpreted to cover pretty much every scenario that comes in. You know, maybe few exceptions.
I guess I would be okay if we just say, one or more rooms, comma, in which space, the whole facility, is let by the owner, as opposed to trying to nail the gnat with a hammer.
I guess when you look at it that way, saying space is let, because you are, you're kind of renting the whole house, you know, you have your own room to yourself, but you're using the entire house.
Yeah.
You're using the common living area.
It's, yeah, my, my only trepidation is that we're one stop on the train that gets this done, and is council going to, want to come back and deal with a little slice of something? I mean, that's a decision.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think dwelling, certainly the definition of dwelling covers that it's a common household. So, I mean, I think that really kind of sets the type of building that it is.
And I would agree that the hotel and apartment definition seem to exclude this as being a backdoor way to get into it.
Right.
Get into a facility like that. Let me look at that real quick.
Hotel-motel, building containing sleeping rooms principally for the use of transient and sometimes containing, sometimes containing accessory uses such as kitchen and dining facilities, lounge, meeting rooms, convention facilities, and other commercial uses permitted within the use district. So it's, you know, I mean, that's part of any, any proposed use, that, any proposed development that comes in the door, and they say, well, this is, this is what I want to provide, this is what I want to do. And, you know, the ordinance is going to say, well, that falls under the definition of a hotel-motel, or that falls under a definition of a rooming house. And I think that the big distinction is that a rooming house has to be a dwelling, has to be a dwelling unit. That's the big distinction. It basically says this is a residential structure, residential building, it's a dwelling unit. That's the distinguishment between hotel-motel and rooming house. Now, to follow up with 305.10, you know, that has those restrictions for R3, we can still impose, if we want to say, well, you know, RLV, that's good for rooming houses, to, you know, maybe a larger rooming house in an RLV district. If we want to limit the size of rooming houses in R3, it's a high-density residential zoning district, but, you know, we could still utilize that 30510, remove the term as a special exception, but we still could, I don't know that, you know, we could modify 30510 to be more suited. If you feel like there should be restrictions to rooming houses in R3, that's what that would be used, that's what that 30510 would be used for, to set conditions for the rooming houses. So we can set conditions, operational conditions. In that case, I mean, yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that included in the attachment, but, you know, just to reread it, you know, that rooming and boarding houses shall be allowed as a special exception in the R3 district if they, if they meet the following conditions, no more than six boarders, each border has to have an off-street parking space, and the owner or leasor of the residence shall reside full-time on the premises. I don't think there's any rooming house that would meet any of those qualifications anywhere, because none of the owners or operators of these rooming houses live onsite that I'm aware of. They're all rental properties. And very, some of them do have off-street parking, not all, but some do have off-street parking. It probably does not match the number of, of orders, but some do have their own off-street parking. And most of the time, as far as the number of boarders, that is most of the time dictated by the building itself, by the structure itself. That's going to limit the number of occupants due to the building code requirements. So you have to have a certain-sized bedroom to have an occupant in it, right? Seventy square feet, I believe, is the minimum. Hundred and twenty square feet is the minimum bedroom size for a two-person bedroom. These are all building code requirements that, you know, the zoning ordinance defers to things like that as far as occupancy goes. The short-term rental program is the same thing. Even though the zoning ordinance says a short-term rental is limited to one family, because it's a single-family dwelling, the number of actual occupants can vary based on the size of the building, the number of bedrooms, size of the bedrooms, even though it's one family. Might be, a building might be able to accommodate a ten-person family, another person, another building might only be able to accommodate a four-person family. So I, I think it's worth looking at whether or not we want to keep any of those restrictions or modify them, or delete that in its entirety.
Take the ax to it.
So do we have?
Sometimes it's easier just physically, yeah, this is how it makes it, 30510.
Is, are there any current rooming houses in the city?
Oh, yes.
Any in an R3 that would?
My guess would be yes, that there are probably a couple in R3 that I would need to verify.
Okay.
Because generally, they've been permitted in RLV.
Right.
And we've had a couple people that have actually gotten variances, top way to rooming house in a two district. One case that I'm thinking of... One case that I'm thinking of was that the property was immediately adjacent to an RLB district. It was right, it was right on the line. And they were actually considering, they wanted to see if they would qualify as a group home.
Right.
But they were not a bona fide nonprofit entity to provide these housing services. So the default is, if you want to have more than, you know, if you want to have this large number of unrelated folks, then you are classified as a rooming house.
Right.
So they did get approval to operate as a rooming house. And they may pursue the nonprofit status and, you know, that kind of thing later on, but they do have approval for the number of occupants that are living there now. And it's, it's a transient, it's a transient kind of three-quarter house type situation.
Kill it.
Kill it.
Take the ax to it.
Yeah, I think, I, I would agree with support removing the restrictions entirely. The requirement for special exception or the, the uses underneath, or the restrictions underneath, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I certainly think that, that two of the three requirements, based on, you know, requiring off-street parking for every occupant, you know, that kind of goes against what we've been
Yeah.
discussing as far as trying to reduce those kinds of barriers to housing options. And, and even the, you know, the ownership or, you know, the presence of the owner and that kind of thing. You know, again, that's just kind of imposing another barrier to that type of housing option. So I mean, I, I think, you know, it would fall in line with what we've been, what the planning commission has been promoting, which is kind of eliminating these barriers to these different types of housing options. And, you know, even the, you know, limit or putting a maximum on the number of borders. That is, I think those things will be addressed, occupancy will be addressed as part of the building code compliance. You will not have a building approved for a larger number of occupants than the building can handle. They will not get an occupancy permit from our building inspector for that. And that is part of our inspection program right now. They are issued an occupancy permit that actually limits the number of occupants. That's, the zoning certificates I have on file for the rooming houses actually states the maximum number of occupants.
Okay.
So it sounds like we would, we would add that removal of 305.10? For the rooming house special exception?
Remove it, yes. That's our desire.
Okay.
I recommend, going to be our recommendation.
Okay. And then on the definition of rooming house? We had a suggestion to change the term rooming units to, or rooming units to rooms. I think I want to add a comma behind dwelling, any dwelling or part of a dwelling, or part of any dwelling, comma, containing one or more rooms. Comma, in which space is let. I, do we have any other suggestions on, any further amendments to the definition?
No, I, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you, thank you for the comments and the clarification. Uh, the, the only other recommendation that I wanted to present today was on the following page. Page five of six, I believe. Page four, actually. So when we were looking at permitted uses in all of our other zoning districts, as I was reviewing, I had noticed that there was one use that, we do have several of these vehicle storage yards located in the city. And as I re-reviewed the ordinance, realized there really is not a specific use listed in our ordinance that covers those types of facilities. So it was a bit of a omission, really, from, from last month as far as looking at all of these uses, making sure they were all accounted for. I double-checked that, there's really no other use listed right now in the ordinance that covers that type of facility. So the suggestion is create the, the term, define the term, and indicate where it's going to be permitted. So I reviewed some other zoning guidance, did some research, looked at other ways of describing it and defining it. And so what I'm recommending, what I'm recommending is creation of a new use called, called vehicle storage yard. It's defined as a site where operable vehicles without occupants are stored for more than 24 hours, excluding auto sales, auto repair, and auto wrecking and/or recycling facilities. Storage is limited to motor vehicles, recreational vehicles, trailers, and boats and/or personal watercraft on trailers only. The outdoor storage area shall not be used to repair, maintain, improve, or rehabilitate any vehicle, trailer, or boat. So the intent of that definition is to not, is to distinguish it from a scrapyard or an auto wrecking yard, distinguish it from an auto sales lot, distinguish it from an auto repair area where people are storing vehicles that are not operable and/or being worked on. This is for operable vehicles, this is, you'll, in Erie, Pennsylvania, we live on Lake Erie. There are a lot of boat storage yards where people store, do winter storage for their boats on trailers. You know, we have thousands of slips in the city. We need a place to house these vehicles, to store these vehicles. Not only boats, but RVs, campers, other vehicles, but, so the distinguishment, these are operable vehicles. We, we, you know, limit the types of vehicles that can be stored here. So this is not for construction equipment, construction vehicles. We do have a separate use that's listed in the manufacturing districts that's called contractor's yard. And that certainly covers things like construction equipment and, and materials that a contractor would use. Those are present also, but this is, this is different from that. So I, I think it's important that we distinguish it differently. You know, we have provisions in our ordinance that do kind of restrict the number of, of trailers, boats, campers, things like that in residential districts. Our residential districts limit storage of those types of things on residential lots to one. So if somebody has a boat and a camper, they're really only allowed to store one of them on their residential property behind the house. They need a place for, to store another vehicle if they happen to own more than one. This will accommodate that. It's, you know, the use is out there, we just have not formally put it in the ordinance.
How do we deal with marinas? There's something already in the definition that deals with boat storage during the off-season or, or storage in the off-season. And the kind of casual or other maintenance that happens in the normal operation of that kind of facility.
It would be great if we could get them to, or encourage through some zoning, some vertical storage rather than just laying them out everywhere for a massive yard, but that's just me.
I think the economics of that is
It's not as bad as it seems.
Yeah, rack, rack storage is, is a great opportunity.
It's much better land use, too.
I'm, I'm sure the port authority is, you know, since they largely control a lot of the property down on the waterfront, I think they've entertained the idea of, of leasing land for an operator of a rack storage facility, but I just don't think anything has come to fruition.
And I'm not sure, put my architect's hat on, I want to encourage a bunch of eighty-foot-tall structures with no opportunity to view through them on the waterfront, you know.
Right, and that would be relegated to the waterfront manufacturing district. So essentially, the south pier is where those facilities would be permitted. Because of the, the taller height limitation, things like that, yeah.
I just, that's. But I'm thinking every all the marinas on port, port authority property, the yacht club, all store a lot of boats. And maintenance occurs on them on a regular basis. Whether it's the normal spring cleaning to much, you know, engine replacements to re-editioning, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, you know, spending an afternoon cleaning your boat, you know, isn't, obviously not in the same area as, hey, we're going to completely redo whatever and it's going to take a few weekends.
Big, big time mechanical repairs versus
Yeah, one afternoon versus coming back, you know, in, every night for a few hours and tinkering on it. You know, those are different in my mind.
Everybody's grandfathered in right now that pre-existing, any changes would make.
Yeah.
I suppose that
Makes it somewhat Nolan. Well, I feel like maybe that's something for us to explore down the line. I suspect we'd get plenty of pushback from the port authority regardless of what we do.
You know, the, the section 306 of the zoning ordinance covers the, the waterfront districts. I'm not seeing anything that, that technically in that section that, that kind of prohibits that kind of activity at the marinas. You know, obviously, there's winter storage and then there's, you know, a couple of, couple of storage yards, if you will, that are present, you know, year-round. The marinas, you know, when they're doing the boat storage in the parking lots, I mean, essentially, that's temporary storage. Typically for, you know, half the year roughly. So that, the temporary storage issue, right, the, the maintenance activity that happens even during the temporary storages is kind of, could be run the full gamut. But it's kind of the permanent, a couple of the permanent yards that are located in a couple of areas. The one in particular is on the south pier, which is in a waterfront manufacturing district, would be, I mean, covered as far as your operating vehicles being stored there. That's one of the areas I was thinking of with this vehicle storage, vehicle storage yard. But that's not really taken into effect like Liberty Pier, where, you know, there's a lot of boats that, I think most of them are, I don't know about operable, but they're not in, they're not taken apart. You know, they're not in pieces necessarily, but there is a lot of stuff there. And, you know, it's not, it's kind of its own animal, I guess. Uh, it's not, it's, I, I guess, different marinas, or different folks do store stuff there, but it's not necessarily, at, at least as far as I'm aware, necessarily related to one specific marina. You know, where, if some of the things you're describing are, you know, if it's related to one marina, you almost look at some of that activity as kind of accessory to the overall use of the property as a marina. You know, it's kind of temporary stuff. But that is more of a permanent yard where there's
I don't agree with this language, I think it's, this language is sufficient for everywhere else in town. We're dwelling on something right now that's, that has no effect.
Yeah.
So let's, an interest is time, let's keep going.
Yeah.
That's worth noting, though.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to look more through section 306 just to look at, you know, there's a lot of design standards in 306 about those properties. Sometime, it may just be a matter of screening in some cases that should be compliant.
Yeah, I understand.
Because we do have screening requirements, particularly in, in the waterfront districts.
I think you could, you could also just, in the definition, add marinas to the list of facilities that are excluded. You know, excluding auto sales, auto repair, auto wrecking and/or recycling facilities. You were inserting marine in that list, that I, I think that, we can debate that another day.
Okay. Okay, so that's what I have for the, the, the name of the use, the definition of the use. And then it's being proposed to be permitted in the M1, M2, and WM zoning, just all three of our industrial districts, excluding industrial park. It's not really, industrial park is, has its own set of requirements that, you know, frankly, is, wouldn't lend itself to, to a storage yard, so. But the other three industrial district, I think it's, that's the most suitable place for these types of facilities. And I think that there's plenty of land out there to accommodate the, accommodate the demand for the use. So that's what I have for you today to add on to what was recommended last month. And what I'm hoping is that we can get these recommendations all addressed at the August 7th public hearing that council has scheduled to go over all of the recommended amendments to the ordinance. And that, you know, we'll see what the public has to say and see if, what council's will is to adopt the recommendations.
Do we need a motion to?
I would say yes, a motion to add these additional recommendations.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Jackie wasn't sure whether she was going to be able to make it today or not, so I do not have anything to report on her behalf.
Okay. Move on to item five, public comment. Anybody from the public going to make a comment? One of you two jokers want to make a comment?
Tough crowd, tough crowd.
All right, move on.
Nobody is zooming in.
Nobody zoomed in?
Just wanted to double-check that.
Okay, thank you. How about a motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.